... public meeting announcement, adequate notice this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6. Specifically, on January 15th, 2025, proper notice was sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger and filed with the clerk at the Township of Bridgewater and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 and no new testimony will be taken after 10 p.m. I suspect tonight we're going to go to 10:30 p.m. because of the Township Council meeting. So if you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
(inaudible) Hi there, good evening.
Hi.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Nora. Chairman Fuze?
Here.
Mr. Waidelli?
I hear.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjono?
Mr. Gajaski?
Here.
Mr. Fresco?
Yep.
Mr. Seacat?
Here.
Mr. Vesio?
Here.
Mr. Kulak?
Here.
And Mr. Gabbit?
Here.
And we have Mr. Sean Collier filling in for Mr. Aller. And Mr. Burr. And Ms. Sarmad. Thank you.
All right, thank you. As you heard, we have Sean Collier here tonight filling in for Rich who has double pink eyes, so I thought it was best that he maybe stay home. Sean, welcome. Hopefully we don't beat you up too bad and you don't ever want to come back.
Thank you.
Glad you could be here. I want to open up the meeting to members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue that is not on our agenda this evening. Okay, seen none, we're going to close that portion. We're going to go right into, we have one resolution for adoption tonight. That's 859 Brown Road. Do you have changes or comments, please?
After none, I move.
All right, we have a motion. It was Mr. Waidelli. Do you have a second, please?
Second, Mr. Fresco.
Mr. Waidelli?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Hello.
I'm sorry. Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Seacat?
Yes.
Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Oh, you know what? Mrs. Amin, I mixed you up, so sorry. Mr. Kulak?
Yes.
Mr. Vesio?
Yes.
And Chairman Fuze?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Tonight, we're going to do for scheduling purposes only, we're going to hear from Germunk Oil's attorney. Good evening, Mr. Simon, correct? Now, at our last hearing, we had some discussions about some things that needed to be moved. Why don't you give the board a quick update?
Sure. So at the last, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Rob Simon from Harold Law. At the last meeting, there were some issues that arose regarding outstanding violations that not had, that had not been fixed or remediated by that time. And so the matter was carried into tonight for scheduling purposes only, so to make sure that what needed to be done was done, so to ensure that the property was safe and not in violation. In fact, I spoke to my client, not only did I speak to my client, I actually went out there personally to double check on the way to our hearing last week. And in fact, the container that, where there was some oil that has been removed, there's been some, some lawn maintenance done to the property, anything that needed to be cleaned up, has been cleaned up. And my understanding from my client and also from my own two eyes is that there's no outstanding violations currently, and that we're in a position now that we can schedule the matter for future hearing.
Okay. I, too, went by, and any board members, if they have any comments, board professionals as well, I know, please.
What did you do with the container? Out of curiosity.
I actually communicated with Mr. Burr. As you may know, that the operator has a number of gas station facilities, and he actually, about a week ago, had, I can't remember, I think it was, I can't get the name, Ludwig Petroleum Oil picked that up, as well as the containers from his other gas stations in the area, and brought them, I believe, to Elizabeth.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Mr. Burr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to Mr. Simon's point, he did reach out to me earlier this afternoon to let me know that the grass had been mowed and that that fuel containment tank was removed. I happened to be on the road looking at some other sites, so I did do a drive-by this afternoon and did confirm that the lawn was mowed a couple days ago and that fuel tank has been removed. I don't know where it went to, but Mr. Simon certainly stated, I think it was Ludwig, that removed it. So it's gone, not on site anymore.
Catherine, you're good?
Just had one question of clarification, and I apologize, Mr. Simon, you weren't here at that meeting, but we were told that those containers are a matter of practice on gas stations?
Yeah, and I've been looking for them ever since, at every gas station I've been going to. I have never seen one.
I'm happy that it's been removed and that his other sites have been cleaned up, but I just want to make sure that that's clarified, that that's, it's not a matter of practice, and this was kind of an abnormality.
Well, my understand, I mean, I'm not a gas station operator, I'm a lawyer, but my understanding is whether they're concealed or not in other stations, they are there for, for emergency purposes for inactive gas station at other stations. And if necessary, at the public hearing in the future, we can get clarification on that in terms of the operations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. So if there's other issues, any other board members, we're going to go in and schedule this. Mr. Simon, talking to Mr. Aller this afternoon, we can put you in July 8th or July 22nd. August is open and September is open.
And I, I think I'm going to take July, but just, if I can just have the indulgence of the board for a minute, just to...
Yeah, take your time. The 8th or the 22nd are the two dates. Both are going to be split hearings with other cases.
Of course. Understood. 22nd.
All right, sold, July 22nd.
And that's with no further notices from the applicant.
So that'll be, at what time, is that a 7?
7:00 p.m., this room. Tonight was a one-time thing, we don't ever meet at 8 o'clock, it's too close to my bedtime. So we're going to go 7:00 p.m., July 22nd, Germunk Oil. Member of the public, there will be no further notice, and we'll be in this room.
I thank the board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Simon, good seeing you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're going to take care of the residential case. Bird Avenue 202, 206, I believe, Mr. Silver, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, members of the public. My name is Michael Silver, and I'm an attorney at the law firm D. Francesco Bateman located in Warren Township. And I have the privilege this evening of representing the applicant, Mr. Mohammed Chad. Before I go on with my introduction, I just wanted to confirm for the record that notice was published outside the doors of the municipal building and outside the meeting room, notifying the public that the meeting start time had been pushed back from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. prior to the start of the Township Council meeting. We're here this evening to present an application for a single standalone C-variants for property located at Block 480, Lot 7, as shown on the official tax maps of the Township of Bridgewater. Subject property is located in the R20 Single Family Residential Zone District. It is a corner lot at the intersection of Bird Avenue and Route 202, 206. The lot is irregular in shape and is largely vacant, and it consists of approximately 37,918 square feet or point, 0.87 acres, which exceeds the 24,000 square foot minimum requirement for corner lots in the zone. As noted in the joint professional review memo prepared by Ms. Sarmad and Mr. Burr dated May 21st, 2025, the property is surrounded by single-family residential uses in the R20 Zone to the northwest and south, and by single-family homes in the R40 Zone across Route 202, 206 to the east. The applicant proposes to construct a single-family residence on the northern portion of the lot fronting Route 202, 206. As reflected in the NJDEP Freshwater Wetlands Letter of Interpretation, there are state-open waters identified on the southern portion of the property. Due to the presence and location of this environmentally sensitive area, which we'll testify to tonight, constructing a dwelling with access or frontage on Bird Avenue is not a feasible or realistic option. Under Section 126, 126-2 of the township's land use ordinance, the rear yard on a corner lot is defined as the yard opposite the narrower lot width. So based on the configuration, the rear yard is located opposite Bird Avenue. The proposed home will have two front yard setbacks under the ordinance along Bird Avenue and along Route 202, 206, and one side yard setback adjoining Block 480, Lots 8 and 10. The only variance requested is for a rear yard setback. The rear yard setback of 25.5 feet is proposed, or as 50 feet is required. So essentially, what the applicant is doing here is seeking to treat one of the two rear yards created solely by the corner lot nature of the property as a side yard, based on the orientation of the dwelling fronting on Route 202, 206, as opposed to Bird Avenue. If the property were not a corner lot, the proposed dwelling setback would, in fact, comply with the side yard requirements of the R20 Zone. So this is, again, just due to the technical designation of corner lots defined under your ordinance. Again, all other bulk zoning standards for the R20 Zone are met by the proposed development. In addition to the joint review memo from Ms. Sarmad and Mr. Burr, the applicant is in receipt of the following department reports from Traffic Safety and Police. Their report commented no issues with the application. The fire officials' review dated May 6th, 2025 similarly indicated no objections to the application. We also received a review by the township's tax assessor dated May 21st, 2025. Again, he indicated no comments. Before calling our expert witness, I would likely, I would like to just briefly address the SOAR utility memo prepared by Mr. Genova dated May 13th, 2025. In short, the applicant intends to comply with all applicable review comments and will satisfy any required SOAR connection fees. Just one thing of note is that the applicant is actively exploring an alternative SOAR connection route via Bird Avenue, as opposed to a connection through Route 202, 206. So in the event that an alternative connection option proves viable, the applicant will submit revised plot plans reflecting the updated SOAR plan in connection with its submission for building permits. And of course, any such plan will comply with all applicable local and state requirements. So to the extent that an updated SOAR plan is submitted, certain items within Mr. Genova's memo may become inapplicable. So we just request that, should the board view this application favorably, that the resolution reflect this possibility. And that, of course, the applicant will comply with any applicable requirements that would attach to a revised SOAR plan. I'm joined tonight by the applicant's civil engineer, Mr. George Folk. I'm also joined tonight by the applicant's architect. If the board would request testimony on the architectural plans, Mr. Koreshi is here to provide testimony if necessary. And I'm also joined by the applicant, Mr. Chad, who I don't intend to call as a witness, but he's here to answer any questions.
Mr. Silver, you're flying as usual, and I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
So you're accepting Mr. Genova's memo?
Correct.
In the event that could change, you could have an alternate route via Bird Avenue, you're going to go and submit, you're going to work it out with him if he has any comments?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that. Sean, why don't you swear all his witnesses in, and we'll move on to the first one. If y'all could stand up and state your name for the record, let's go left to right. Mr. Collier's going to swear you in. Go ahead.
(inaudible)
Okay, go ahead, you can introduce yourself, and then we'll do the swearing in.
(inaudible)
Okay. Gentlemen, would you all three please raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth this evening? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Counselor, I didn't catch your, your last name, but if you could just, well, if you could give me your last name, but also just confirm that notice is adequate and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application?
Sure. My name is Sean Collier, and yes, the notice on the application is in proper form, it was published timely, and timely served by certified mail, so the board does have jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, with that, if I could please call Mr. Folk as our professional witness. Mr. Folk, I'm going to ask the board to accept you as a professional witness in the field of engineering, so if you could just state your name again, your professional background and educational credentials for the record?
George Folk, E.L.I., United States of New Jersey, been practicing engineering since 1985. My license is presently current.
All right, we accept you, Mr. Folk. Have you been in front of this board before? I think you have, all right?
Yes, I have.
All right, great. Good to see you again.
And if you want to use this instead...
We have one question for you. What year did you get your license?
I got my license in 1990.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Folk, Mr. Styers, who could not be here this evening, prepared the plan before the board, but you're familiar with it, you've reviewed it, and you can testify upon it?
That's correct.
Excellent. So can you just walk the board through what the applicant's proposing this evening?
The applicant's proposal, a single-family house. Single-family dwelling at the corner of Bird Avenue and Route 202, 206 South. The single-family dwelling is located on the northerly portion of Lot 7. There is a state-open waters that comes from 202, 206, and goes from east to west. And with that open water, there's a 50-foot riparian buffer, which goes, pushes this building envelope to the north. The proposal's a typical, single-family dwelling.
And I'll just ask a couple questions of you, Mr. Folk, from the professional review memo. To your knowledge, are there any trees proposed to be removed as part of this application?
Yes, there's one tree, right here, right behind the house.
Okay, thank you. And can you just discuss briefly the existing stormwater drainage and the location of where stormwater runoff is presently directed, and indicate whether that's changing by way of this application?
The direction of stormwater is from an east-to-westerly sheet flow across the property. The intent where this project is to collect a roof runoff and put it into a dry well.
Thank you.
The existing drainage that comes from 202, 206 has been rerouted around the property previously by either the township or the state. So the majority of the water that comes from east to west under the state highway has been rerouted. So in essential, in, in essence, this state-open waters receives very little drainage area as part of its runoff.
And you noted that there is a proposed dry well on the property?
That's correct, behind the garage.
Okay.
To the west of the garage.
And you feel confident that the, that, well, this is not a major development under this local and state stormwater regulations?
That's correct.
Okay. But you feel confident that there should be no adverse impacts felt to nearby neighboring properties as a result of the proposed stormwater management and drainage plan for the property?
That's correct.
Okay. I had mentioned in my introduction that there was a variance that we're seeking this evening. Can you just briefly touch upon that?
I think the explanation earlier from counsel was that the lot definition in the township is on a corner lot. The lot with the shortest frontage is the front, so that would create a side and a rear. And then being that there's a frontage here, we have another frontage. So the rear yard, which is 50 feet required in the zone, we're showing it as 25.5 feet for the garage. And the reason to push this over again is because of this state-open waters, which doesn't receive the drainage that it used to get, but the state came out and gave us an LOI for this property and placed a 50-foot riparian buffer on the state-open waters.
Thank you, Mr. Folk. And just a couple more questions. So, so minor access permit's going to be needed for access onto 202, 206?
Yes, that's correct.
And to your knowledge, the application's been submitted, and we're awaiting receipt of the approval?
It's been approved, and...
It's been approved.
They've sent it back with the fees for the approval.
Okay, great.
It's a two-stage approval, and I have the letters, should Mr. Burr want to see them.
And so we can certainly provide that if necessary, and the, any other DEP approvals possible for the property? So for example, if the SOAR plan was to come in and the connection was to come in through Bird Avenue, is it possible that we may need additional DEP approvals?
Yes, the DEP does allow a utility crossing where you, you bury the crossing in the, in the same dirt that you've dug out, and it's, you know, after the growing seasons of one or two years, you don't even know the utility is there. So that permit is available for this project.
So...
To tie in a sewer can, can come to Bird Avenue.
Thank you. So if we do end up coming in with a different SOAR connection plan or SOAR plan, we will comply with all state requirements and local requirements?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Another question that was in the report, the impervious coverage calculations, can you confirm whether or not that included the rear patio area?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And if I may, I don't know what your preference is, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask Mr. Folk some planning questions. Would you prefer I conclude the, his entire testimony, or do you...
Your case, Mike.
Okay. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Folk, I'm going to ask you some of the planning questions in support of the relief that we're seeking. Obviously, Mr. Folk, you're a professional engineer, not a licensed planner.
Oh yeah, I'm a planner.
Oh, you are a planner?
Oh yeah. I don't, I don't...
That's why I was surprised.
Regularly wear the two hats most...
Oh, okay. Well, then, well, is your...
We've accepted him as a planner before, so we're going to accept him tonight as well.
Okay, great. So your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, excellent. So the board's going to accept Mr. Folk as a planner?
Since 1990.
Great, 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 okay. Well, we believe that relief can be granted under both the C1 and the C2 criteria under Section 70, under the municipal land use law. Turning first to the C1 variance, the positive criteria, variance relief may be granted where due to, due to the exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, topographic condition, or other unique physical features of a specific property, strict application of the zoning ordinance would result in exceptional and undue hardship. Would you agree, Mr. Folk, that this property presents such a unique situation?
I do, and again, with the previous testimony of the riparian buffer that was presented by the DEP.
Great, great. So you, you believe that the hardship presented here is directly tied to the physical configuration of the lot, namely the environmentally sensitive areas, and that this is a condition affecting this specific property and not necessarily the entire zone?
That's correct.
Okay. And so in addition to the C1 criteria, we believe the application also satisfies the C2 standard, which permits relief when the benefits of the deviation substantially outweigh any potential detriments. So turning again to the positive criteria, in your opinion, does this application meaningfully advance several of the statutory purposes of zoning under Section 2 of the MLUL, namely Sections or Criteria A, G, and I? And we'll go through it?
Yes.
Okay. So let's start with subsection A, which addresses the promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Mr. Folk, isn't it true that the proposed dwelling is being sited on the northern portion of the lot away from the environmentally sensitive area to avoid impacts to the DEP-regulated open waters?
That's correct.
Would you agree that this layout promotes public health and safety by avoiding wetlands and minimizing disturbance to sensitive land?
Yes, that's correct.
And would you also agree that it promotes the general welfare by facilitating an efficient and appropriate use of the property in a manner that is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, it will.
Tying into subsection G, or Criteria G, which promotes providing sufficient space and appropriate locations for residential uses, this lot is oversized for the zone and is surrounded by other single-family homes, correct?
Correct.
So would you agree that the applicant is proposing a permitted use in an appropriate location while demonstrating sensitivity to site-specific environmental limitations?
Yes, I would agree.
Would you also agree that the development makes effective and appropriate use of an otherwise underutilized parcel, helping to meet local housing demand without introducing any incompatible land use?
Yes, I would agree.
And then subsection I, which speaks to promoting a desirable visual environment through creative and thoughtful design. Isn't it true, and I think you've already testified to this, that the applicant is simply seeking to treat what is technically defined under the ordinance as a rear yard as a functional side yard?
Yes, that's correct.
Would you say this is practical and well-integrated and enhances consistency with the surrounding development pattern?
It does.
And, and just for the record, you can confirm there are homes along Route 202, 206 that front on 202, 206?
Yes, they do.
So this is certainly not out of character of the neighborhood?
That's correct.
So turning to the negative criteria, you've already testified that you believe that this furthers, furthers the purposes of the MLUL. You testified earlier that the proposed single-family dwelling conforms to all applicable bulk standards, including height, coverage, and setbacks, with the sole exception of the rear yard setback, correct?
That's correct.
Single-family homes are permitted use in the zone?
Yes, they are.
And there, then, you've already testified there are other existing homes from Route 202, 206 with similar frontage?
That's correct.
Are you aware of any substantial detriments to the public or to the zone plan that would result from the approval of this application?
I do not know that.
And, and finally, just under the Site 2 criteria, you would agree that based upon your testimony and the facts of the application, that the benefits of granting the requested variance clearly outweigh any potential detriments, if any, thereby satisfying the C2 standards?
That's correct.
Thank you. No further questions of Mr. Folk.
All right, let's open it up to questions from the board, and I definitely want to talk about the, the drainage and the dry well situation, we'll get Mr. Burr to talk a little bit about it.
Sure.
Board questions, comments?
I have a couple of quick questions for you. When you look at the, when you're facing the property from Route 202, 206, and you look at what might have been an entrance from Bird Avenue, that's where your riparian zone is, and there appears to be what I'm going to call a drainage area that is really rough in the way it appears. And then the house, which is adjacent to that lot, has almost a little canal built in front of it, which in turn, I'm guessing dives into a pipe or, or something underneath the ground, and I don't know, one, I don't know where that water exits. Okay, just let me finish asking my question, and you'll have an opportunity to speak, but thank you for offering. So that, that dives down into that, I don't know what the word is, but it looks like a big pipe, I'm guessing, carrying it underground. Are you going to do anything to the, in the riparian zone at all to improve the appearance of that?
No, we're not going to affect the riparian zone at all.
Okay. And you said that the, the state or the DEP had come sometime earlier and rerouted most of the flow?
Sir, I don't know who rerouted it, but it was rerouted either by the township or the state previously. I'm not aware by whom or when.
Okay. And do you know how they rerouted it?
Yes. There's a culvert underneath 202...
That's the word I was looking for, culvert.
There's a culvert under 202, 206.
Right.
Goes from the easterly side to the westerly side, and it appears that they've improved that culvert by cutting off the, the flow that goes to the west into our property, and then traversing across to the, to the west, and put an inlet there, and then took a pipe, a 36-inch RCP, reinforced concrete pipe, and went over to the intersection, intersection of Bird Avenue and Route 202, 6, South, and then went west along the right-of-way of Bird Avenue.
Okay. Well, that's helpful, thank you. But as a result of your request to do the building and make all the improvements that you described, you are not able to touch that land, that riparian zone, or is that something you could, the applicant could improve if they so chose? I'm not quite sure as to whether you can touch it or not.
I'm not sure why you would want to touch it if you could maybe explain, I mean, there are, there are caveats in the DEP that permits, that you may be able to do something, but there's hardships. You have to prove that you don't have any way around it. If there are ways around it, then, you know, there's no permit available.
Okay. So it's, it's your intention or the applicant's intention to leave that untouched?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The driveway that extends onto 202, 206, how long is that? I can't tell from the map.
Eighty, eighty feet to the garage from the pavement of 202, 206.
Okay.
The pavement to the garage faces 80 feet.
All right, Mrs. Amin.
Lot number seven. Can you hear me now?
Sorry?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Lot number seven.
It's our lot.
I mean, there are caveats in the DEP that permits, that you may be able to do something, but there's hardships. You have to prove that you don't have any way around it. If there are ways around it, then, you know, there's no permit available.
Okay. So it's your intention or the applicant's intention to leave that untouched?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The driveway that extends onto 202-206, how long is that? I can't tell from the map.
Eighty feet to the garage from the pavement of 202-206.
Okay.
The pavement to the garage faces 80 feet.
All right, Mrs. Ammon.
Lot number seven.
I'm down.
Can you hear me now?
Sorry?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Lot number seven.
That's our lot.
Okay. Is owned by someone who also owns the adjoining lot, which is, I believe, six and seven. They are the owners of six and seven also. So have you talked to the owner that they can use six and merge it with seven? Did you speak to them about merging so you could, you didn't have this variance?
Let me answer that question. So the applicant owns lots seven, and it's now Lot 5.01, which both are conforming lots. So they're both, they're oversized lots. Essentially, what happened was the applicant owned three lots on the tax maps, and they were undersized, so by the doctrine of lot merger, the applicant actually lost one of his three lots. So the applicant started with three, now he has two lots, but if, I don't know if that answers your question, but he does own the property to the north.
Right. So based on what I read here in the deeds, five and six became one lot, is that-
Yes, and it's identified as 5.01 now.
Right. So do they plan to put another house in future there, or what do they have?
That, I would believe that that would be, I don't know what the definitive plan is, but I think that would be something that the applicant certainly would consider in the future to use the other, his other lot.
I see, okay. I have another question for him. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. There is a lot of green, green, green. You know, I went there to look at the property. Lot of trees, lot of greenery. So how much of that, this lot number seven, you're going to remove a lot of them?
I think we're gonna disturb around 13,000 square feet. Let me check with that. 12,500 square feet, so-
I mean, your drawings doesn't show as many as I'm looking at there.
We're gonna minimize the amount of disturbance for that house.
And then there is, including fallen trees, there are a couple of trees that have fallen down, so on and so forth.
Well, we're only taking one tree out, and we're allowed to take two.
Okay.
So we have one tree credit.
You're going to-
Has to be taken down, we have that. But I'm sure they're gonna, you know, sub landscape and provide-
I see, okay.
-greenery.
So it's only three, two, three trees will be taken out, that's what you're saying?
Well, one tree is proposed to be taken down, but we're allowed up to two, but we think we can, we only need to take down one tree, we think. Obviously, the applicant's gonna clean up the property and get rid of dead foliage and any type of dead vegetation, and make the lot suitable for a single-family dwelling.
That's correct.
Thanks.
All right, anyone else? All right, Mr. Burr, your thoughts on the plan for stormwater?
So I agree with Mr. Fulk. The project is a minor development. Does not meet the threshold of a major development, so in a case like this, I think a drywall is applicable. There is a maintenance component to drywells. Once they're put in the grounds, we'll wanna make sure they're being maintained, but if it's sized properly, and if the applicant confirms that we don't have shallow groundwater, which they haven't yet done, then it would be, it would be, you know, a suitable measure.
Would this be a condition of potential approval if we had that deed, that the maintenance manual put into-
Could be, it's been done before, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, they can give, they can do a test pit and then agree to do a maintenance manual. That'll be recorded on the deed. But, yeah, I think the drywall is a good fit here. I also think that there needs to be a little bit more swell work done on the property. It sounds from the testimony that just the roof area is what's gonna be connected to the drywall, but you have the driveway that I think slopes to the rear of this corner lot, actually back around the house according to the topo. I'd hate for any of that runoff to impact the existing dwelling to the rear that faces Bird. So if you can rework the grading to ensure that if there is any runoff, it's not leaving your property onto that, onto that neighboring property. Get it in that drainage, that drainage channel or that open water area.
Will do.
Okay.
So it's your opinion that the other residents behind, I guess to the west, would be safe?
If they agree to rework the grading-
Yes.
And if they put in the drywall and it checks out as a condition, the only other question I would have is just, George, if you can confirm the volume or the sizing of the drywall? Wanna make sure that it's gonna be adequately sized to capture a substantial storm event, not just a, you know, a one or a two-inch.
The calculations are designed for 25-year-
Okay.
For all the impervious on the site.
Okay.
However, we're capturing just roof leaders at this time.
Okay.
So the drywall's oversized for the impervious that we're capturing, but we will work something in to capture the driveway, and I think the patio could probably be created out of porous pavers.
Mr. Chairman, if they can work in some of those revisions, then I think from my perspective, I'm satisfied with the drainage plan.
Mr. Silbert, you'd be willing to file that as a condition of approval, the maintenance manual?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. Catherine?
Thank you. I don't know if this was covered, just some questions about the DEP regulations on this site. Is the DEP going to require, as part of the LOI, that that portion be de-restricted that's been identified?
No.
They won't require, they don't-
Well, it's part of the LOI, which is filed at the county with a map, with meets and bounds.
Okay, so, okay, it'll be, it'll be recorded by deed?
Yeah, by deed notice, declaration of deed notice.
Thank you. One thing that was missed in the review memo that we did not bring up was that this is an opportunity for street trees, and under Section 126-191B13, it does require all streets, regardless of being Route 202-206, have street trees. So I would recommend that the board would include that as a condition to include the street trees. Obviously, they haven't been identified, so that would be a condition of any approval.
They would work with you on that? Is it okay with you?
Absolutely, absolutely okay.
All right. Their second condition there.
And I think everything, I think they covered everything else.
Great, thank you. All right, members of the public that have questions on Mr. Fulk's engineering or planning testimony, come on up. Just need your name and your address, please, into the microphone.
Sorry, I hate public speaking.
No, no worries. Good evening, welcome.
Anyway, I'm Kathy Loun, and I live at 794 Bird, which is, I didn't need that, which is, the subject property is gonna be the corner here. I'm over on this side, second house.
All right, and this gentleman's with you?
Yes.
Okay.
We both own the home.
Okay.
He's my support system in case I fail. So we bought the house in 2002, and the lot that is adjacent to the other lot was also a vacant lot. And across the street, the drain water comes down on both sides, to the right and the left, goes under 206, and then it just opens up and goes. So, and I have a video, and I can show you.
At this point right now, we kinda have to get your comments into a question on his testimony.
Okay, well, my question is-
At the end of the case, I'll give you a chance to present.
The big question is the stormwater runoff? What's the proposal to do about that?
Ask him.
Let it go?
Yeah.
It's like, if you put the house there, and you said you were gonna redirect it or somebody, how are you gonna redirect it? I didn't, I couldn't see what you were showing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll show. I'll turn it on. We're just waiting, my bad. The drainage currently comes-
This is 202.
It's 202-206. This is the culvert that comes underneath 202-206. This is your house over here?
My house is over here, yes.
Up here.
This is the-
This is the, yeah, the culvert. Well, no, it used to open up, but the, someone, state or township, pipes it along the road frontage of 202-206 south, and then into Bird intersection, and then west.
Go over it.
Yeah, see this-
This is where the water-
Here, show him, Kathy.
Actually, no, the water comes down.
The water drains from-
From here to here, and it just opens. It doesn't go that way.
Well, you don't, you don't see that pipe because it's under the ground in the right-of-way, in the road. But this head wall is still here, but nothing really comes out of it.
Oh, so then you could down here, and then that's where it's coming out?
Then it comes up this way, and then it heads towards-
The side.
Well, that could be in a heavy storm where these are overflowing or-
Twice, twice a year.
Mr. Fulk, if I could just follow up with that. In your opinion, is the application before the board doing anything to exacerbate current drainage issues that may exist in the neighborhood?
No, we're not.
So you're not saying that there could be an issue, but we're certainly not doing anything to exacerbate it?
Right.
Can I ask something?
We're not, we're-
Only one tree.
Everything from over here, over here to the south, from the corner of this house to the south is all being, is being left alone. That's the riparian buffer that we have to acknowledge.
I'm sorry, you have to ask a question, and you gotta get it in the microphone, or we-
Can I show him the video and ask him if this is gonna be maintained? Are they doing anything to make this worse or alleviate it?
Well, why don't we establish what that picture is, when it was taken, who it was taken by?
I can see it.
Yeah.
Eyes work, my ears don't.
Do we wanna mark it in the record, if we can?
How are we gonna get it in the record? Okay. When is the picture from, and who took it?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, the assistant township engineer.
Okay, right.
I'm not aware of having seen that, so I can, I can definitely talk with Tony, I'm just not confused right now.
Well, one thing he did say is, when he looked at that, he says, "They looked at this, and to alleviate the problem, way too expensive. They can't afford to do it."
Well, first of all, it's a state road, so it's not Bridgewater's Road. Bill, would we even have-
Well, Bird Avenue is.
Bird Avenue, sure, yeah, yeah.
So we're talking about the runoff on Bird Avenue.
Okay.
I would, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I, you know, I definitely respect the concerns of the objectors or the members of the public that are questioning right now, but if we can keep this to questions, and then all of your concerns, you can certainly make the applicant and the board aware of-
Okay.
You'll have another opportunity.
If we could just get in your microphone, ma'am. Come on back, let's use the microphone, thank you.
What effect will this exasperate the already existing issue, the building, the new building? That's the question?
No, it will not.
The question I have is, when they do all these things, you're talking about drywall and this, what happened when they built the property across the street from where he's talking about, on 202-206, but they put it on Bird?
On the east side of 202-206?
What's across the street, going toward Green Knoll? Okay, yeah, so the east side, right? The town made them put in a swill.
Made them put-
A swall.
A swall, okay.
But actually, the state- But once the house is built, the town says, "We don't care what they do with it." So everything you're talking about with him having to do this and that, once the gentleman owns a house-
Right.
He can do whatever he wants.
Well, we're gonna record this in the deed, the maintenance requirement for the drywall, so if something goes wrong, you're gonna have recourse to go back against this property owner.
The last time it happened, the guy filled it in, and the town said, "We don't care."
Well, if that happens, they're coming back here.
In addition to that, though, if this does get approved, there'll be a resolution of approval that if you notice something wrong with the way that the property's being, being maintained, if you think that the applicant or a future owner's not maintaining the drywall, for example, the zoning officer is well within his authority to issue a zoning violation.
No, my concern is, if you make him do what he's supposed to do, which is fine, right? He does it, but then when he moves in, he says, "I don't like this, I'm gonna just fill it in," or whatever. And the town, well, last time it happened to us, the town just said, "Well, it's his house, he can do what he wants."
Now, that-
Even though they made him put it in to begin with.
If that happened to a case that the zoning board or planning board heard, Mr. Burr would be out there on site, I mean-
Yeah, he took down, he backfilled the swall and took down-
You should go and contact the zoning officer in Bridgewater.
He did. He said, "It's his house, he can do what he wants."
Just doesn't sound like what he would say. If it's flooding, we gotta fix it.
That's exactly what happened.
All right.
You can also go to a township council meeting, too, to vocalize any concerns. I'm trying not to, I don't-
They did vocalize our concern, which is why we're here, and we were told, "It's his house, he could do what he wants."
I don't, yeah, I don't-
Once he owns it, we're out of it.
Again, I can appreciate your concerns, but this-
I just wanna know, is that gonna happen again? Can that happen again?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I respect everything that they're saying, but I would like to move on if you don't have any other questions.
Well, my question's unanswered. Can that happen again, where you tell him he's gotta build this, and then once he owns the property, he could do something different with it, and you don't care about it? I think it's more your question.
Oh, I care, and I'll go over there, and I'll raise hell, and I'll have Mr. Burr, and I'll have our zoning officer. I've been doing this for 14 years, and I tell you, everybody on this board cares because we volunteer. And if we, if I was to see something like that happen, sir, I guarantee you, I'd be there with my Jeep in their driveway with Mr. Burr, just like Germont Oil has had a problem with this board for three years now? Actually, I think it goes back further, since 2017. I've been pulling in their gas station, I pulled in it yesterday, I left my house, and I went and I sat in their driveway, and I guarantee you, if there's a problem with this case, and Mr. Silbert, I know pretty well, he'll be there with me. I've had, I've had people that have come before this board, and I've driven to the application site at midnight after the hearing, and I've met with the owners. I guarantee you, if that drywall gets filled in, I'll raise holy hell.
And if you do say, "Well, this has to be done for construction, for us to meet what we want."
Yeah.
It cannot be changed later because he wants to change it, and you can't do anything about it.
Bill, why don't you, real quick, talk about what would happen if this drywall was filled in?
Well, I think that's part of the reason why there's gonna be a maintenance plan, that's part of the reason why it's gonna be recorded on the deed, and certainly, as-
So that makes it a permanent structure?
That is a permanent underground structure, and those documents ensure that there's some legal responsibility for the new owner, whoever's gonna be the future owner of the house to maintain that facility. As Mr. Silbert said, there's also gonna be, assuming that this application's approved, there will be a resolution of approval, which memorializes everything that's been agreed to. That's gonna be the document that the zoning officer and/or the engineering department in the future, if there is an issue, can use to get that, that matter corrected. I suspect what happened with the house across the street is that it was not the subject of any type of planning or zoning board application. I think it was a conforming lot that they merely applied for construction permits, got the permits, and built the house. I am a little surprised to hear that you were told that there was nothing that could be done. I could try to look into that, depending on how long ago it was.
It was years ago, it wasn't long. It was like 2005.
But I would, I would definitely not expect something like that happening on this particular case.
All right, that's what we were concerned with.
Sure, no, I understand. Mr. Silbert, real quick, can you talk about what would happen if a maintenance plan was not followed by the applicant, and it was furthermore filed with the town, with the county clerk? What would happen?
Well, if there was a maintenance plan and the applicant failed to abide by it, the township could come in and maintain the stormwater management infrastructure and put a lien on the property, and the applicant or a future property owner would be, it would be in trouble because they wouldn't be able to dispose of their property with a hefty lien on their property, so.
All right.
The property, that was our problem. He went foreclosed around.
Yeah, they're gonna, we're gonna deed restrict it, and if you wanna speak more at the end of the case, you're welcome to come back and make comments. If you don't have to ask questions, you can make a comment.
Sir?
There'll be a beautiful house built here, and it'll help-
I know that about it. You gotta get her a microphone.
Yep, understood.
We're just more worried about it changing after the rules of how to build it are there, that's all.
But if this gets approved, maybe the house that's been foreclosed upon will sell, and it'll hopefully serve as an igniter.
Thank you.
Sir, the gentleman member of the public, oh, that's loud. Sir, would you mind just putting your name on the record for?
Peter Kukuzza, 794 Bird Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mike McLean, Lot 48010, Block 10, so I'm west of the proposed site. My question would be, are you aware of the building that went across, so the east side of 206 that was just recently built there? Adding to more water being pushed across the highway, making that lot much more wet, and including my yard, which is where all the water goes to? So if that has already been disrupted, I don't know when that plan was made, but was that plan made after the last construction? Because that new construction caused a major issue, and it's actually a highway safety issue currently. There's been a cop sitting there every time it rains to make sure nobody goes through a puddle that's so big it's gonna cause an accident. That water's now running across the highway into that lot.
When was the last time you saw that?
February, I got a picture of February, with a cop sitting there with a big splash coming off the highway.
So I would say that each property owner has a responsibility to ensure that there's proper stormwater management on their own respective property, and if there's an issue with someone else's property, surely my client, and just like you, you can't be held responsible for that. What I can tell you and what our expert has conveyed to the board this evening is that we are going to conform with all local and state regulations when it comes to stormwater management, and that's all, we will control everything that's in our control, we will control.
That doesn't really answer your question of whether or not you made the planning prior to knowing the water level with the new runoff. There's more runoff than there was probably when the plan was made. I think that has to take into account, because you're saying all you're gonna do is try to divert the water. I don't think you realize how much water's coming through that property.
I think the problem...
I can't step on my property for weeks after it rains, I can't go in the backyard.
I think the issue there was that it wasn't fully stabilized yet. That whole area, that whole property just drains straight into the highway.
I was assuming it was construction runoff originally, but that house is done in full, and that highway still fills up.
Stabilized, and I don't know whether they had their drainage infrastructure that I'm sure this town approved was installed yet. So, I mean, it's one of those things, it happens when you have a freak rainstorm, when you're in the middle of construction. I remember that, I do. And we were asked if it was our project.
I just know, you know, that house has been my family since it was built. There's been always a little bit of dampness, it's a large lot. Never been like this before, so I can only imagine, another house right behind it is only gonna make it worse. There was no real plan to keep the moisture out of it, I don't see how that is fair to the neighborhood, because at some point, it's gonna push off my property to the guy behind me, so.
Fortunately, you're upstream of us.
No, I'm Lot 10, I'm downstream. That water's coming from the highway through your lot to my lot.
Oh, you're down, you're...
I'm Lot 10.
Oh, I thought you were on the other side of the highway.
No, the other side of the highway is where they built, which is pushing the water. My other question would be, what's the definition of a tree? How could you be taking down one tree? It's a forested lot.
The definition's eight inches at DBH.
There's not more than one tree in that woods that's more than eight inches?
Not in the area of our disturbance.
Yeah, I just find that hard to believe, it's a wooded lot. It's not like an open lot where there's one tree or two trees, it's an entire set of woods. When it's forested in, you can't see the highway. But now you're saying you're only removing one of those, I find it hard to believe that they're all tiny sticks, but...
Could be many trees that are...
That was my question.
Thank you. Is there any merit into upping the size of the dry well here to help the neighbors, you know, potentially pick up some runoff?
We can look at that with Mr. Burr, we'll work with him, for sure. I mean, there's, what we can collect is what I could put in a dry well.
Sure.
Where he's talking about is way off our property.
You know, if it's sized to a 25-year storm, you know, maybe doubling, even though you don't, you know, pick up a linear increase, but, you know, in some of these massive storms, the 100-year storms that seem to be happening more and more, maybe a larger dry well is something that you could look into and work with Mr. Burr on.
Yeah, and we can look into other things, like I say, pervious pavement for the driveway, maybe, if, you know, that would help alleviate some of our impacts.
Any other members of the public questions? All right, next witness.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna have Mr. Koreshi very briefly address the submission of his architecturals. So, Mr. Koreshi.
Yeah, at the end of this case, you can speak as much as you want, which should be in about 15 minutes, all right, and we can put that in the record. Thank you.
You can just state your name and your professional background, your credentials on the record, because I'm gonna ask the board to accept you as an expert in the field of architecture.
Sure. My name is Ali Koreshi, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 1996.
And you've appeared and testified before other zoning boards and planning boards in New Jersey?
Yes, I did.
And you've been...
This is my first time in front of this board.
And you've been accepted by those boards as an expert in architecture?
Yes, I was.
License was in good standing?
License is...
Yes, it is.
All right, could we accept you as an expert in architecture?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna just quickly go over the floor plans.
And these have already been submitted?
Yes, so, I mean, the shape of the house or the floor plans doesn't have anything to do with the variance we're seeking. Basically, it's around 4,000 square foot house. This is the ground floor, with the two-car garage, large living area, family area, and a kitchen, dining room and a living room, and the main foyer, two-story high, with some, a patio in the back. And on the second floor, we have four bedrooms, and two, three bathrooms, I'm sorry. Four bedrooms and three bathrooms, one of them is the master bedroom, and this is two-story high space in front of a house. The house is gonna look like, something like this. We're gonna have stucco on the majority of the areas, some stone on the foundation wall, and the middle portion will be cultured stone, a few little elements to give a little spice to it, and basically, it's gonna be a really beautiful addition to the neighborhood.
And Mr. Koreshi, there were no questions or comments relating to architecture in the review memos, but just to clarify, we can conform with all the bulk standards, and that there might be some deviations once we go to pull or submit for building permits, but this is a general idea of what a house will look like here?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
All right, four questions on the architecture testimony.
How does the size of the proposed house compare with others in the neighborhood?
Well, I don't have that data with me, but generally, they are similar sizes houses.
And you base that on what, if you don't have the data?
Well, just by looking at it. We have gone through, drove through the whole neighborhood, I live very close to that area, so in general, these sizes houses are the most popular at this point.
And Mr. Sweeney, if I can just hopefully address your comments, so the permitted FAR in the zone is .16, we're at .10. This is an oversized lot, so the minimum lot size is 24,000 for a corner lot, but we're not maximizing FAR, so even though we're a lot that's, you know, a larger lot than what's the minimum required, we aren't maximizing FAR.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Board professionals?
I have a question. Just what is the distance from the front wall of the house to the back wall of the house? I was looking for it, I didn't really see it, so if you could just, like, front wall to the back wall, what's that distance in feet?
Forty feet.
Distance is 40 feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In the depth of the house.
Correct, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Yep.
Board professionals.
I don't have any questions, I would just like to clarify for Mr. Sweeney's question. There's a mixture of different kinds of architecture on 202, there's not many houses, a lot of gaps, you know, it's not a neighborhood or development per se. While this may be a popular architecture in Bridgewater, on this road, there's a mix of capes, ranches, colonials, there's a whole mix. Would I say that this is the predominant one? Probably not, but there's a mix, so it's, no matter what it was, I don't think it would have a common thread.
One question. From a lighting perspective, can you just give us an overview of what type of lights are gonna be installed on a house like this?
Well, we're gonna put the typical residential lights, which will not shine on the neighboring properties, mostly diffused lights.
It'll be low wattage residential style?
Yes, yes, we will comply with the zoning ordinance.
And would you agree to a condition prohibiting spotlights of any kind of lighting being affixed to the rear of the building that might shine into the rear yard off property limits?
Yes, we will agree to that.
Something you'd agree to?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question for Kathy. On your report here, under maximum floor area ratio, when you look at it, you say required 3,600 square feet, then you go further down, propose is 4,090, does it require variance?
No, it is not, I made this error. I multiplied the floor area ratio by what's required in the zone, the 24,000, that's why that's lower, it's actually, what's permitted in the zone is actually 6,066. So .16 on a 37,000 acre, uh, foot lot would actually be 6,000, so they are under. I apologize, that was just a typographical error.
Catch Mrs. Ammon.
Thank you.
All right, members of the public, questions on architectural testimony? Art scene none.
Thank you. So I don't have any further witnesses, I'll just briefly conclude my case to say to the board that they're clearly, nearby residents have vocalized concerns with stormwater management and drainage issues. I'm certainly not belittling that, but we haven't heard any issues with respect to the frontage on Route 202, 206 versus Bird Avenue, the rear yard setback variance, which is really what, why this application is before the board. The board is equipped to assess whether or not the applicant has met its burden of proof with respect to the variance relief, and I think that the fact that we're here because of this variance should give the public some comfortability, as well as the board, because now we're really required, through your resolution and through the conditions we've agreed to, to work with the board professionals to ensure that we're doing the best we can with stormwater management, where if this was a fully conforming application, we're submitting for a building permit and we're not before the board. So I would ask the board to keep that in mind in deliberating on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silbert. Members of the public, that would like to speak for or against this case now, it's the time to approach, and you can, we gotta get you on microphone. If we can get your name and address again, please.
Give you this letter that I wrote to the town engineer, and when I had emailed it to him, I put all the exhibits in there, along with the videos of exactly what happened.
Just get your name and address, please.
Kathy Lau.
Thank you.
794 Bird.
And you would like to give a letter that was dated?
Just this past July.
And you wrote it to Township of Bridgewater?
Yes, to Mr. Gallo.
Could you just summarize it, and then you, by all means, you can give it to the board, just can you just give us a summary of what the letter is?
It's a letter about the complete water issues going on on both sides on Block 478, and where they're planning to build, and the event of the history of what took place from the building, the one that they built on my street.
Okay, and ma'am, before you begin, can I just swear you in for the record? For testimony, if you would raise your right hand?
Sure.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give to this board tonight is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And I heard you say that you had submitted some documents already to the secretary via email, is that correct?
To Mr. Gallo, I sent, the engineer. When I sent the letter, I actually emailed it, and I attached exhibits with it of...
Have you seen this letter?
I haven't seen it, so this letter is dated July 2024?
July 18th, 2024.
July 18th, 2024, so prior to the submission of this application.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So I haven't seen it, I don't have an objection, though, it can be submitted, there's clearly issues, and I just think that this is not necessarily the proper forum to express these issues.
Exactly.
This application isn't creating the issues that you're...
No, 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 it's issues that preexisted, so, yeah, so I just...
So you want the board to each read it before they deliberate, or how do you want us to handle this?
No, I just thought, I was just gonna hand it in.
I'm gonna instruct the board that you've just summarized it, why don't we give it, we can pass it down while we take care of, and we hear from other people, take care of business. Okay.
All right, we can mark this for the record as O1.
Okay, and why don't we hand it down to Mr. Vessio?
Anthony, he has the video, I submitted it to him.
Came with the letter.
I don't have anything, I've never seen any of this, this is the first I'm hearing of it.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Gallo does not work for me, I am a volunteer, this board has jurisdiction over tonight's testimony only, and the reports that our board professionals have submitted, they've submitted in a packet, and that is dated...
Okay, I just brought it with me, but I did.
Can we show it to the...
No.
That's fine.
So we have a May 21st, 2025, letter from both of our professionals, Catherine and Bill. Catherine is our township planner, Bill is our township engineer. So they take all the information that is submitted by the applicant, and they put it together, and they give their professional opinion and questions for us to ask, and basically give their opinion. So nowhere in their letter, and I want this to be very clear, have they referenced any information from you, any video from you, any letters from you? Okay, this is the first we're hearing of it. So I would like you to talk about the video, why it's important for us to hear it.
Because it actually shows what happens with the floodwater, where it goes, because as far as I know, the two drainages that come on the east side from 202, 206, come under the road and then just open up into the land. There's no sewers connecting them or running them in any way, shape, or form, and they just come out into the properties. And the only sewers that are on the road on Bird is in front of my house, and then across the street, they're not connected to anything on the east side, and then the one on my side just runs across the street and then runs down, but there's nothing where the ones coming across the street from 202...
So, Ms. Koreshi, I'm gonna make a formal objection, if that's okay, so I think that the, I'm making objection on the basis of relevance, not that there isn't an issue, I'm not suggesting there isn't an issue, but in the context of this application, the video isn't going to aid the board in their deliberations of whether or not to grant variance relief for this application, so for that purpose, I would object to the playing of the video this evening, based upon your testimony.
Ms. Lau, what I can do for you, I don't need to see the video, I don't think the board needs to see the videos, I will talk to Mr. Burr offline after this hearing about potentially Bird Avenue maybe needs another sewer.
It does.
Okay.
You don't want my other letter, but I have something they were gonna do.
I need one of you to speak at a time, okay? Timeout. We have multiple board members that have hearing aids, they can't hear you, okay? And I want them to hear you, because what you say is important. So when you wanna speak, you can come up to the microphone so the board members can hear you, and they can, you know, use your testimony as they make a decision tonight. You understand? Okay. So I will talk to Mr. Burr, and we'll talk about potentially a sewer in front of your house on Bird Avenue.
Okay, okay. All right.
All right, sir, why don't you come on up? Okay. All right. So Bill, we're gonna talk offline about Bird Avenue, not related to this case.
No problem at all, Mr. Chairman. I will add that I do know there are some preexisting drainage concerns in that neighborhood, Bird, Victor, a number of those roads. It's a classic case in Bridgewater where uphill areas have been collected in formal storm sewers, and then the runoff is allowed to discharge in open ditches, and it just makes its way through properties.
Right.
I'm aware of some issues, let's talk offline. I am gonna speak with the Assistant Township Engineer to get more information on this particular issue, and we'll see what we can do.
Right.
And just, can I, just one question, there's nothing that's happening that is going to make any of those issues any worse, right, in this application?
If the project is approved and built with the conditions or the amendments that have been agreed to, then I don't believe there will be any negative impacts as a result of this housing.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
Just wanna make sure that that's clear.
Sir? Name and address, please.
Lot 48010, Mike McLean again. My question was to the rear variance, since it does back up to my property, if I were to do anything on the edge of my property, does that... If I were to do anything on the edge of my property, does that impact where that house is? If I want to put up a fence, do I want to put up a pool? If I split my lot and I want to build a house there, am I not going to be able to? Because now I need a rear variance because he's too close to my property?
Attorney?
Yeah, I, I can, I would just say that there's nothing that we're doing with our application that in any way will impact how you are permitted to use your property under the township zoning ordinance. So if you have, if in your hypothetical, if you were creating a variance, it has nothing to do with our property, it's because of your.
Not a deterrent.
Setback is still far enough that it wouldn't matter to mine.
The setbacks are determined based upon the lot lines and not based upon where we're constructing a home. And it has no impact to your, to your lot. In fact, we're complying with the setbacks with respect to your lot, Lot 10.
Okay. I would say that I do believe that the water runoff will be more because of the building. I know he said it wouldn't be, but I don't see how that'd be possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public would like to make a final comment? All right, looks like we're done with public comment. Mr. Silbert, could you just take us through the stipulations that we agreed to in this case? I know we had the, the deed restriction on the maintenance, we had Mr. Burr suggesting about lighting, I think you had something on trees?
Yeah.
You're going to limit to one tree?
Okay, so we, we agreed that we would include all maintenance obligations and the deed with respect to the drywells. Mr. Burr requested that more soil work be done to address possible changes to the driveway grade to allow runoff to the drywell. We suggested, and I, I don't remember if this was a, I don't believe this was a condition, but we are going to look into whether or not to put in porous pavers to the patio. So if we want to put in the resolution that we're willing to work with Mr. Burr to come up with other possible solutions to reduce stormwater concerns or drainage issues, we're happy to do so. We're going to work with Mr. Burr, Ms. Sarmad, with respect to street trees to make sure that we're compliant with Section 126-191 B13, I think it was B13. No, we agreed that we wouldn't put any spotlights that shine light on neighboring properties, and that is what I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Silbert. If you're done, we're going to open up deliberations, I'm going to throw it down to Mr. Vessio. Good evening, sir. What are your thoughts on this case?
Listening to the residents' comments here, I mean, I think they have, you know, real concerns, right? I think they're, they've been genuine, what their concerns are. Considering what they've brought to, to this hearing, I don't believe that this property will have a significant impact to the current water issues that there are present, so I would be voting in favor of this applicant. Definitely looking forward to the town, looking into this issue on 202, 206 and Bird Avenue and the surrounding streets to see how they can mitigate any further water issues in this area. So I would be yes with this.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco.
You know, this is, this, this lot's been vacant for a long, very long time. I'm familiar with the area, used to live in this neighborhood, and I just think that, you know, our board is bombarded with developers trying to cram condos and apartments in multiple lots and units into small spaces, so I'm actually in favor, fully favor of this. I think it's great that this gentleman is invested in this neighborhood to build a single-family home, to bring more people, more families into our neighborhood and on this corridor. Looks like a nice design, I think the water is an issue, but we've got the best. This is the, these are the best people in the county that are, are helping us mitigate water, and I, I support it, and I think it's a great case, and I appreciate the, the honest testimony and the experience, so good luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you. I look at it as a hardship case because of the riparian zone that runs through almost the middle of the lot, which has a significant impact on where any housing unit can be placed. And I, you know, from what I, from what I recall, they're right on the edge of that riparian zone, so there's not much room for them to play with that. But that is the real reason why there's this setback issue on the rear, on the rear yard. Otherwise, I think it's, it's a good plan, I think the neighborhood will benefit, and I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mrs. Amin, your thoughts, please.
Okay, the lot that we're looking at is double the size of what's required in that area, and it's, from my perspective, the only little thing that we are looking at here is a side, side yard or backyard, whatever you call it. And since the property on the other side, who knows how long it's going to be vacant because it, it's wetlands and all that, maybe they may not even pipe wire, so that, that side of the property will be almost empty, I think, in my opinion. So I'm in, I'm going to approve the application.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of it, they've said just about everything. I think Mr. Burr is on top of the situation here like he always is on these, and I'm in favor of it.
Gaski.
And I would agree, I'm in favor of the application, it's clear that the, the variance that's required is just a result of how this property functions. The only thing I, I would say is if there is any, any thought of developing anything on that Lot 6, which I think I heard is a possibility, then any considerations to the size of that drywell, possibly taking that into consideration might make sense, but otherwise, I'm in favor.
I understand that there are current water issues. I don't believe that the project presented to us will exacerbate the water issues, so I would be in favor.
Relax.
Yeah, I would echo the comments that were made earlier by the board, and I would add that because we have a lot that presents a hardship, and we have a corner lot which requires the kind of dual setbacks, that's really forced us into this situation where we have a reasonable request for a nice addition to the neighborhood, and I would support it.
While I sympathize with the water issues on a very personal level, us granting this variance, I don't think has any impact on that. I trust Mr. Burr's expertise on this, as I am not an engineer and he is, I would be in favor of this.
And, and to save some time, I'm just going to skip it. I'm going to move for a motion, please.
I move.
Was that to approve?
Approve.
All right, motion to approve, a second, it was Mr. Gaski, Mrs. Amin and Mr. Gaski.
All right.
All right. If we can get a vote, please, vote call.
Mr. Whiteley.
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Fresco.
Yes.
Mr. Gaski.
Yes.
Mr. Seacat.
Yes.
Mr. Colak.
Yes.
And I think that's seven.
You can call me. No.
Chairman, Chairman Foose.
I'm a no. I'm a no. So 6-1, you're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we need a break?
Yes.
All right, why don't we take a very quick break?
9:30.
It is 9:20, let's come back at 9:25, and we'll pick up with 821 JCC.
I had last weekend, I was gonna have you come over.
Such a cute, smart little guy.
I mean, it totally went down the tubes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hope Jenny's all right.
Last picture at our house.
It just kinda looks sad.
And here's the last, that's sort of that before I keep going. Told her we brought the good times.
Yeah, he's a funny dog.
He had a personality on him.
All right, we're gonna come back in the session. Um, Rick, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. White Dally.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mrs. Zemen.
Yes.
Mr. Fresco.
Here.
Mr. Bonjono is absent. Mr. Gajaski.
Here.
TCAT.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Vesio.
Here.
Mr. Gabbit.
Here.
Jamin Fouse.
Here.
Do you want me to do the professionals? Mr. Burr. Mrs. Sarmad.
Here.
And Mr. Colia.
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coakley, good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Kevin Coakley, Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicants. And with me is Mr. Howard Cohen Esquire, who separately represents the Jewish Community Center. Mr. Cohen. So, um, we're here this evening to continue this case, which, um, by my recollection, started last August. We were here in November, we were here in March, and this evening, and just to kind of, I know everybody has a great memory, I don't, so I do recount things a little bit. So, it's a 15-acre property, three acres of which will go to the Jewish Community Center if this application goes forward. The other 12 acres will be retained by the other applicant and used for residential housing, townhouses. The first hearing, you heard from Ms. Friedman of the JCC, who testified as to the reasons why the JCC wants this property and why its uses support a use variance for this pro, for that property. As you remember, it's not on one of the designated streets, and so it must get a use variance to expand its operations. You also heard from Mr. Michello at some length. He'll be back this evening, and he's really here for two reasons. One, to kind of bring the board back full circle of all the changes that have been made to the plans from when it was filed, and mostly to, to address the main change that's being put forward this evening, which is a reduction in density and a reduction in FAR. Put in simple terms, we started out with a project for 64 units. It became 60. We had to address a lot line change, and now it's been reduced to 52 units. So, you'll hear from Mr. Michello on those grounds. You heard from Eric Keller, the traffic engineer, who testified for one meeting. Mr. Peter Steck, the planner, he started off at the last hearing, did not get finished. He's here again to finish his testimony. I guess he would start off first to get him finished. So, that's our plan for the evening, as far as we can, can go with that. And we will also just note, and I'm sure you remember, this is a bifurcated application. So, if granted, it comes back to the board for site plan and subdivision approval, as if it were starting over, but with the, the use variances, if granted, attached to the application at that point. One housekeeping matter, and I don't know whether Mr. Olver made you aware of it, but there's a document that Mr. Steck utilized in his last testimony. It was an, an age, bar chart of age of people living in Bridgewater. I'd like to move that into evidence, if I, if I might. I think it was, it was a seven.
Was that a census document?
Yeah, census document.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So, unless the board has any questions of me, I'd like to bring Mr. Steck back.
Great.
Hey, sir, if you would raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give to the board is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth this evening?
I do.
Thank you.
I was, I guess, in the, being cross-examined the last time I was here at the meeting, but I want to kind of amend my testimony because of the recent change in the reduction of the number of units. So, just to kind of summarize.
Time out, time out. That's the first we're hearing of a reduction of units. So, so maybe you should have Mr. Michello testify before. This is news to, to the board. We were at 60 units. Or you can just tell the board now what you're proposing. I'm fine.
I did, that was, and I actually told Mr. Steck that he could rely on my representation.
I just needed to confirm with your attorney that this is in fact true. So, you know, a planner to give, to give design testimony is a sudden bit of news to us. So, officially, the units are 52 on site. From Mr. Michello. Okay, thank you, Mr. Steck.
Okay. So, the applicant reacting to his, its perceptions from the last meeting, reduce the number of units, age-restricted units, from 60 at the last time the board was entertaining this application, to 52. You will see a plan that shows you where, at least on the concept plan, the units were removed. But keep in mind, it's a concept plan, and, and if perchance it's approved, there certainly can be changes to the site plan, because the board still has site plan approval. The consequences of reducing the number of units reduces the density. The prior density at 60 units was 5.035 dwelling units per acre. The new density is 4.36 dwelling units per acre. And if you recall, I had quoted from your 1990 last comprehensive master plan, that the density range started at five, and then went up from that, talking about multifamily in, in Bridgewater. So, we're, we've dropped considerably. We're now 4.36 dwelling units per acre. Because we have eliminated a number of units, the floor area ratio has also gone down. It was 0.45, and the new floor area ratio is 0.39. I'll just mention this, although we are not seeking the C variances at this time, the adjusted impervious coverage is being reduced from 48, at least on the concept plan, 48.6% to 45%. So, we are still, because this is bifurcating, asking for a use variance, a D1 variance, for the age-restricted townhouses, the multifamily in the R40 zone, the single-family zone. We're asking for relief to expand the campus of the JCC by three acres. And again, there are slight modifications to the density and the floor area ratio that is going, that it's going down. The only other thing I'd like to add, and, and you'll see in the concept plan now, where the units are proposed to be eliminated, and where there is now an opportunity for some kind of recreational space on the property. The proposed future lot line is staying the same. It's still part of this application, is three acres being assembled with the JCC, and the balance being on the, the townhouse property. What I did, one final point, is that after I testified, I know that there was some commentary about, you know, the increase in, first of all, 55 and overpopulation, and that the municipality has accommodated a certain age-restricted housing. I did go back and review your planning documents on the website, and I just wanted to reference page nine on your 2022 reexamination report. That was a reexamination and a master plan amendment. The master plan amendment was largely, had to do with warehouses. But let me just read from point B in that document, page nine. It said, the title is "度到如此程度，上述日期的项目被减或增加" and such date was the prior reexamination report. And I'll just read this paragraph, if I may. "As it relates to the balance for a variety of residential uses, housing options for its seniors was particularly evident in the zoning and approval of two major sites previously envisioned for senior housing. One on Route 28, an apartment complex, and one on Route 202, 206 North, a large lot in the AAR zone, were either converted to unrestricted housing by the state legislature or developed instead for houses of worship purposes. The Four Seasons Complex on Route 202, 206 North is an existing owner-occupied townhouse community for seniors. The new master plan should present attention to other potential locations for owner-occupied senior citizen housing communities within the township. Approval was recently granted for an age-restricted community with individual housing units on individual lots in the Martinsville Village. This provides a reduction of concern for senior living accommodations." So, the only point that I want to raise is, yes, it's true, you've produced age-restricted housing, senior housing, but at least the last reexamination report in '22 said, there's still a need for senior housing predominantly owner-occupied. And frankly, that's, that's the category that we're proposing. So, that's kind of just an amendment to my prior testimony where I was cross-examined, and I don't know if the cross-examined has finished.
You know what the occupancy rate is? Can you, I mean, you're stating that those exist. Do we know how successful they've been?
All I can tell you is the public policy of your reexamination report is, even though you've produced some, the town, at least the planning board says, we're still looking for additional owner-occupied senior housing.
Right, I get it. I get that you're making a point about the fact that, what this document said, but what we're really here to hear is whether it's necessary, right? So, if those that you are quoting exist, are they filled? Are they empty?
Well, whether it's necessary is not a variant standard. We're, my testimony is that the site is particularly suited for this type of use. We, you know, as I mentioned last time, I'm not, I didn't do a market study, that's not my expertise. The developer happens to have done a significant number of age-restricted communities, and I guess I can say, he's putting his money on the line. He believes that even though, you know, we're now down to 52 units now, but he believes that there is a significant market. This is a slice of the market. This happens to be, as you know, these are taller buildings, they meet the height limit, but they're at the higher end of the scale in terms of price. But he believes that there is a significant demand for these types of units.
Right, I understand that, and we get that. But we have other, we know that there are other properties in town that were developed for this purpose that remain vacant and unsold. So, I'm just asking if, which it sounds like you're saying, no, you don't have the answer, and that's okay.
I don't, I, I'm not a market person.
No, no.
But I, again, I'm not spending the money to develop this.
Right, yeah, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
You were mentioning revisions that had taken place prior to the master plan, and quoted a paragraph that we don't have in front of us. But you were saying that it offers some guidance as to what the new master plan might include, and yet there is no new master plan, and therefore it would not be included. Is that fair to say?
Yes. I, I think, again, the reason I emphasized about the age of the master, your last comprehensive master plan, largely having to do with the negative criteria. You know, if you had just adopted a new master plan and said, we, you know, we don't want any more age-restricted housing in town, I wouldn't be here, because that would be substantially detrimental. But the answer is, you don't have, allegedly, the, the website suggests that you're working on a master plan now, the planning board is. I looked at the, the videos that are on the master plan, and they just don't divulge what the future policy is. All I can say is that the last time there was a reexamination report, it acknowledged, yes, we've built some age-restricted housing, senior housing, but the, at least the planning board says, I guess to itself, when we're doing the new master plan, there's still a need for owner-occupied senior housing.
I'm not, I'm not sure that it says there's still a need. I think it's offering that there would be an opportunity to include that in the new master plan. And since we don't have a new master plan, which, what guidance you're trying to provide us, I think is irrelevant to the testimony.
Well, let me just, I'll repeat the one sentence. "The new master plan should present attention to other potential locations for owner-occupied senior citizen housing communities within the township."
But there is no new master plan, and the new master plan, should one be adopted, is not bound by that revision.
Yet, we don't know what the new master plan is gonna say.
We already said that, and we agree. We don't know what it's gonna say.
And, and my point is...
And we don't, we, what we do know is that any new master plan would not be bound by a suggestion in a revision to the old master plan.
It's not bound by a reexamination report?
That's all we're trying to get at. So, I would urge you to go on, though, because time is of the essence.
I'm, I'm through.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Steck, what happened at our last meeting that led to the applicant reducing the number of units from 60 to 52 specifically? That's your testimony, those are your words.
That's my testimony.
You said there was a reaction to what happened at our last meeting. I'd love to hear what we did, so I can do it 10 times more and get the F.A. off.
I, I was not party to the reduction. The applicant made the choice to reduce the number of units. I was not party to that decision.
Mr. Steck, your testimony was, and I wish I could have it read back, was that there was a reaction to our last meeting. So, what were they reacting to? What specifically did this board do to get it to 52, because I want to do it again?
The, 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 all I, all I know is the applicant reacted to the proceedings, and...
But you testified at the last proceeding.
Yes, but, but I don't make the decision as to the number of units. There was, for example, a criticism that there was no area on the plan that allowed for recreational use.
Perfect. What else?
I mean, there was talk about traffic, but in, in my opinion, that at least was technically solved.
Okay.
But I, I can't speak for the applicant. All I know is that the applicant...
You did. You said that there was a reaction.
Yes.
Okay.
The, the applicant is aware of these proceedings and made a judgment.
In reaction to the last hearing?
Well, from the start of the applicant...
Your testimony is your words. I'm not making this up.
It started with 64 units, it went to 60, it's now at 52. The applicant is, is, for whatever reason, making a judgment that this is a, a better applicant, a better development for the property.
Now, your testimony is, it was in his judgment, it wasn't reaction to anything specific.
I can't speak for the applicant.
So, what's your testimony there, Mr. Steck?
I just gave it. In my opinion, I amended the statistics associated with the project.
Right.
I think that the rationale, that the planning rationale that I offered is, is warrants an approval of the application on a concept basis.
It sounds like you reviewed our master plan, and I'm curious, is there any part of our master plan that has high density, where we typically allow housing units to be built with such high density as such you're proposing here in this case?
Again, your master plan gave a range, and the low end of the range was five units an acre for multifamily. We're now 4.3 something.
We, we are undergoing a master plan revision, which has gone on considerably. And I know Mr. Kulak has sat on that subcommittee. Thank you for your service there, John. Is there anything, maybe you can give us a slight preview, I know it hasn't been adopted, but is there anything in this new master plan that's going to have the ability for someone to build in such high density in Bridgewater?
The master plan will be hopefully adopted in July, just to give an update.
Wonderful.
Status. And as a preview, I do not believe that the master plan will have any recommendation about that, about high-density housing in Bridgewater.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Steck, any other board questions?
I, I just want, I guess, clarification on that. What is the density again, as proposed?
The, the density that we are now proposing at 52 units is 4.36 dwelling units per acre.
4.36 per acre. And without a variance, what would that density be, if you had to conform?
They, they, so we're doing 52 units. If you just use the minimum lot size and don't take out land for streets and single-family development, there could technically be 12 dwelling units on the property.
So, what's the density number?
If you divide, I'll, let me, I have the calculator with me, I'll tell you. That's close to one unit in an acre.
So, we're going from one to...
If it was, if it was single-family, and again, that's rough density. If you were, as you know, developing it with single-family, you'd have to eat up land with, like a cul-de-sac, et cetera.
Okay, I just want to be clear. We're, we're going from one to 4.3.
That's correct. It's, it's, again, it's, the approximate one unit per acre was intended for one kind of land use. We're asking for a different kind of land use. So, again, when they set that density, that was intended for detached, single-family.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Steck, on your testimony, a lot of it's, almost all of it is focused on this being age-restricted housing. My question is, what is the spirit, what's the intent of age-restricted housing in a community? What are the objectives of age-restricted housing, and why, you know, would, you know, Bridgewater, you know, want to have such type of housing?
Well, I can tell you that there is a segment of the population that wants to be in a specialized environment, where there are not a lot of kids running around all the time. They choose an age-restricted community at that stage of their life. I find that municipalities often pressure developers to do age-restricted housing, and primarily because it's more of irritable. There are no school-age kids. And while that's not, that's a, a rational zoning, a reason to zone an area for age-restricted housing. The applicant has built these types of communities before. The applicant believes that there's a demand for this type of unit based on the population now. But outside of that, I find that many municipalities like to go in that direction, again, because it's, it's less of a burden on municipal services. I note that, for example, the new COA regulations, recognizing that municipalities favor age-restricted housing, has increased the ratio from 25. You can do 30% of your need now on age-restricted housing. So, the state recognizes, at least from the low and moderate point of view, that there is... is a demand for this kind of housing.
Does, are objectives of affordability sort of a, a goal of age-restricted housing?
Well, it's a mandatory goal. You know, we're in the fourth round, so this project is not exempt. As you know from the testimony, the applicant is committed to paying its fair share, a dollar amount, rather than building on-site, and that's essentially a negotiation between the applicant and the governing body.
Okay, but if I'm, if I'm 55 and older, is having a home where it's more affordable to me, something that should be considered when zoning age-restricted housing? Is there a reason for having certain price point for age-restricted housing, you know, a certain level of pricing, so, you know, folks on a fixed income can actually afford it?
It's, again, they're different segments of the population. This applicant is, made a marketing decision that a higher-end, age-restricted housing is a, a marketable, marketable item. That's not going to solve all the problems. Any, you know, single-family house that you present in front of you, you could say, you know, why don't you make it smaller, only have three bedrooms instead of five? You know, the marketplace takes a role, obviously plays a role here, but your ordinance requires that multifamily over five units contribute to the need for low and moderate-income housing. We have said on the record multiple times that we are going to comply by not building on-site, by paying for subsidy on another property, and that's essentially a negotiation between the developer and the governing body.
I, I, I need to jump in here, and Catherine, I think we need to weigh this in. I know Rich had, had talked about this. Our, I don't know if you know what our number is for Bridgewater?
I think it's 440?
Nope, 421.
421. We've required every single applicant to come in here under this round to allocate actual houses, because, you know, Bridgewater has a big budget, they, they approved their budget tonight, $51 million. Your money doesn't move the meter for Bridgewater Township, and I need to hear from a governing body that what you want to propose is acceptable, because I, I don't want to just drop this on the governing body. They need every single unit to get to this, and Catherine, as the township planner, I, I think we need to have a discussion about this. Yeah?
Yes, Bridgewater has satisfied much of its affordable obligation by getting subsidies and using it for projects.
Yes, and having worked with Scarlett, who was our planner at the time, that was a much more reasonable number, and you know Mr. Coakley, and I know you know Mr. Steck, that these rounds have really gone up exponentially on a requirement for a township, to the point where I don't know where there's enough land for us to build these units, and, and that's no exaggeration, there literally is nowhere to put them. So all the cash in the world, you can pull up a brink struck, isn't going to change the fact that we don't have a place to put them. Absolutely, and I think we need some sort of guidance from an elected official to that fact. Well, you don't, I, I almost think it's a negative criteria for you, the fact that you don't have this.
Well, just, just a few things. One, I think that, just, just to correct Mr. Steck, the, the state did not allow 30% age-restricted in the fourth round because municipalities like it. It's because New Jersey has an aging population that needs affordable housing as they age in place, and that's why it was increased, because New Jersey is getting older, and the options to stay here, keeping it affordable, are harder. So to Mr. Vesio's question, providing the actual units is incredibly important, and it's my opinion, too, that that's important.
Affordable units?
Affordable, in the, in the, excuse me, Mr. Coakley, can I finish? The, the third-round settlement agreement that Bridgewater signed with Fair Share Housing Center actually included a provision, the, the provision that Mr. Steck just noted under section 126-321.4, which does require that any multifamily project, so units over, that produces five or more units, has to provide a set-aside, 15% for rentals, 20% for for-sale. Nowhere in that section does it talk about the payment in lieu of construction. There's actually a separate section of the township ordinance that has existed under the development fees, which I've provided in my, I think, my most recent supplemental memo, and it does, and I brought it up, and I quoted it in that memo for a reason, because it indicates that the township may allow developers of sites zoned for inclusionary development to pay a fee. So the allowance before the council, I think, is definitely in question, reading the plain letter of the ordinance. This site's not zoned for inclusionary housing.
Yes.
I was on the phone with Mr. Ma and Mr. Savo. Mr. Savo expressed that there is an ordinance by, by the, does it matter?
That was before the settlement for round three.
Mr. Savo was not on the phone. Someone from Mr. Savo's office was on the phone, and he actually, the, the conversation that was had, had to do with the fact that the Fair, the amended Fair Housing Act actually struck the provision, whether it was inadvertently or not, about payments in lieu of construction, and my position on that, regardless of the township ordinance, was, is it actually even legal to do a payment in lieu of construction based on the amended Fair Housing Act? Mr. Coakley disagreed with me, and the representative from Mr. Savo's office actually said they were going to check with Fair Share if that was the intent.
So get a letter from Mr. Savo.
I hate to interrupt you, but you really need to speak into a microphone, because we can't hear you, and the people at home can't hear you.
I mean, Mr. Savo and I have discussed this, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but he, he basically says the board ought to act on this application, envision the approval, if they give an approval, on, on satisfying the council.
Fair, fair enough.
In the past, that, that's how Bridgewater has met most of its affordable housing requirements.
It was approved in previous rounds. According to our township planner, it is not allowed in round three. Okay.
And, and I, the-
I mean, your township attorney does not agree with that, and I really think it's beyond Mr. Ma's jurisdiction at this point, that they need to break-
Well, we have 29 minutes left, according to that clock. We're not going to go to a vote tonight. Mr. Coakley, would you contact Mr. Savo or produce a phone call with, with Ms. Ma, and let's get this in writing, so I don't drop a case or a requirement onto the, the governing body, the township administration, that puts them in an untenable position? I don't want to do that as a board.
No, and, and I was just referencing, it wasn't an opinion, I was referencing the plain letter of the ordinance, so that the board was aware what was permitted.
Yeah, and just so you know, Mr. Coakley, just, just so you know, that we just did approve a house, housing project, and they did have a set-aside of physical units, and we would not accept a, a payment in, in that particular case. Now, this case may be different, and I would love to hear Mr. Savo's opinion, if we could just get it in writing for the board to help us out.
A variance, a use variance is issued by a board of adjustment. It's as if the property was so zoned.
Okay, fair enough. So you'll contact Mr. Savo and get a letter to that fact?
I'll contact Mr. Savo and see if I can get a letter. People don't generally go around writing letters in, in something that's outside of their present jurisdiction.
I'm not following the argument, but this is the first time that we-
I will see Mr. Savo tomorrow, and I will ask him what his opinion is, and if he would, if he would write a letter to the board if he has an opinion on the matter.
And work with Mr. Aller, and that way he can instruct the board that we can accept a cash in lieu of, you know, an actual set-aside, which we've done in other cases. Every other case under round three has been an actual set-aside of units.
You don't decide the money.
I, I don't. Thank goodness. All right, so members of the public-
I have one more que, I have more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vesio, please.
Pivoting a little bit, on the type of housing that's being proposed here, how is that conducive to age-restricted housing? For example, age-restricted housing, I'm thinking about, you know, an elderly couple, you know, they're planning that, they're going to be getting older, and maybe they'll have some physical impairments. I think you mentioned their tired density, more vertical construction, how is that, how is that appropriate for older living?
Again, is, in my judgment, skilled in this area, and the answer is, there are people that want to be in an age-restricted community, but they want to have, not confined to one bedroom in a house, they want to have bedrooms to have relatives come and visit, older children come and visit. If they have the means and want to make the investment, obviously, these houses are more than what you might find in Greenbrier, like in Ocean County. You know, one, one and a half-story buildings with a, you know, a big first-floor bedroom. These are larger units, and the applicant is making the decision that there are people that don't want to be confined to essentially a one-bedroom, one, you know, one-bedroom house.
Or is there, well, could be four bedrooms, five bedrooms. Is there a single bedroom on the first floor of this home?
I, I don't recall what, what the mechanism is. I, I believe there were eleva, were there elevators in the, I, I don't recall the, and again, this is, this is a concept plan, so things can change, but my reco, my observation is that, you know, the applicant knew very early on that the charge was to produce age-restricted housing, and he, he's putting his money on the line. He believes that these are marketable, there, there may be people that have, you know, again, a house in Florida and one here, but these, these are units for people that want to have enough space to have relatives visit, friends visit.
I, I understand that point. My, my question's more of, is there a type of construction that is more suitable for age-restricted housing? Like, would you want to arrange a home in a certain way that is inviting to more age-restricted age groups, say?
You know, it-
Because I don't see any difference between this type of construction and any type of other construction.
Well, the-
But what's the purpose of this?
Construction code doesn't make a difference to them. They're all single-family housing, they have to comply with the, the, you know, the uniform construction code, that's the end of it. They don't have a different standard, but these, there are units that, for example, have elevators in them, that obviously accommodate people with ambulatory issues. These are units that are big enough to have multiple designs. We're at a preliminary stage, this is just a concept approval. The, the variances we're seeking here are the, the, essentially the use variance for the expansion of the J C C, use variance for multifamily in a single-family zone, and along with that, because this zone was designed for just single-family detached, there's an F A R issue and a density issue.
Right, and I think my question's not really the density issue. Building vertical yields you a certain number of units, building more horizontal, you know, maybe having a, a unit with a bedroom on the first floor, and maybe the other three bedrooms on the second floor will yield you a different density. So I'm trying to understand, on this type of community, if housing that would be really beneficial to this age group, you know, what does that look like? What is the density of that type of community?
This is a, a little bit unusual in the market. It's not like, again, Ocean County, Greenbrier, the U S, U S Homes market. Those are very small, lower-end units. This applicant has made the judgment that a higher-end unit is saleable, and there, there is a demand for it. And again, if, that's, there are, there are people that, when they're downsizing from their, whatever, five-bedroom, single-family house, they don't want to get pigeonholed into a tiny, single-family house in an age-restricted community. There are people that have the resources, that want to keep their furniture, keep their home office, allow relatives and friends to stop by and stay for a few days.
Okay, I got, I'll end my questioning, thank you.
I just said one, so you, you mentioned the, the 2022 reexamination, and the, the plan said that we need more, we should look for opportunities for owner-occupied senior, senior housing, right?
Yes.
So you believe that what we were referencing in that reexamination was an unusual development?
I don't understand.
This development is unusual for senior housing? So you think that this is consistent with what was, what is in, was, was in at the time, and was what they were referencing when they said we should look for-
All I know is what I read you, that, you know, the, the reexamination report did not go into more detail. It simply said that although we've produced senior housing, we would like the new master plan to look for sites for more owner-occupied senior housing. That's all it said.
Right, but this is the type of development that you believe we were looking for?
We, we don't know, but it, the answer is, it is age-restricted housing. There will not be one school-age child, child that will come out of this development.
That is the only thing about this development that you believe fits, is that it is-
Well, I-
55, everything else about the, which may be unusual, in your words.
I think what's unusual about it is that I think people will be attracted to this site because of the proximity of the J C C. I think that, as I mentioned, this site, you know, can't be integrated into the residential homes to the north or south. This is only oriented toward the state highway, so it can't, it's, it's somewhat isolated. And again, as you know, I, I spoke about the range of uses that are in this corridor now, and again, part of that is, addresses the negative criteria. Again, in my opinion, age-restricted housing is not one-size-fits-all. There are different segments of the market.
I understand, I just want to make sure I understood what you introduced and how this fits in this exact-
I don't know more than what I read to you, but again, I wanted to, I came across that, because there was a question of, you know, do we really need any more age-restricted housing? And the answer is, at least in 2022, the planning board suggested in doing the new master plan that you look for, for more sites. That's what it said.
Mr. Board Member, perfection is the enemy of good. A planner in this instance is looking to address consistency or inconsistency with the master plan. Unfortunately, we have a master plan that's so old, it's really legally irrelevant.
Mr. Coakley, I'm sorry to interrupt you, if you could pick up that microphone, or, or you could even be seated for your comments, you're closer to that microphone.
It's a 35-year-old master plan, so you look at, at, at reviews of the master plan. What else are you going to do? I'm not sure any court would uphold your master plan as a, as an essential element in this matter, since it's so damn old.
Then why reference it?
Because it's the law.
I understand, when you referenced that we were looking for that, and I was just reacting to the fact that this particular development, in his own words, is unusual for 55 and older.
So, Mr. Steck, what about these units will make it different and more marketable than the 12 units that are sitting vacant, age-restricted on Doc Watch Hala property since 2023, which we approved in response? I'm not done.
I don't-
I'm not done.
I, I, I think, I don't know the marketing of those units, I don't know the size of those units.
Those units were approved based on that 22 reexamination, that was important in that case. Catherine, were you working with us yet? Yeah, but, but we, we had a developer in here that banged on the table how much we needed these units, and he cited the same census documents, and we need these units, Bridgewater needs them, we're an old town. And I asked the attorney, who happened to be in this room, how many have been sold?
And, and maybe that there's a-
Zero.
Maybe there's an inaccurate price point for what you get for your money? I don't know the answer to that, because I'm not a developer, but this-
But you referenced that these would be high-end, correct?
Yes.
That's the same designation that that developer used.
Well, every housing unit that you've had built in the last 10 years, what does the developer say? Luxury units.
That's untrue, we just built one for orphans and, and underage chi, or-
That's a specialty, but every developer kind of markets their units, even rental units.
That developer marketed to orphans.
So that's not, that's a marketing term.
And that, and that developer also had a set-aside of 15% for affordable. Actually, all of them were affordable, yeah, sorry, all of them were affordable.
I, I, I can't answer what the marketing issue is with that, but all I'm saying is that this, this developer happens to be experienced in this market.
So your units will sell better, and they're more in demand than the units that are sitting vacant currently on Doc Watch Hala, which we approved in- vacant currently on Doc Watch Hala, which we approved in response to 2022.
If there is a level of accoutrements...
Chimney Rock Road.
Chimney Rock, I'm sorry. Yeah.
If there's a level of accoutrements that's comparable to the price, this applicant has made the judgment that he can sell them.
Okay.
Yeah, I know there's a free dialogue here, but actually, it's just a question. Get through it. Answered the question about eight times.
The question I asked? Why these units are different? It sounds like he didn't, he doesn't know. But he knows that they're in demand, which the board heard, I heard.
He doesn't know. The applicant knows.
Sorry.
The applicant is putting the money, to quote him, "He is putting money on the line."
Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fresco. All right. Any more board questions? Board professionals?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I know we've referenced that the master plan is really old, and it's hard to rely upon it because it's so old, but we're relying upon a master plan reexam now. And I brought this up at the last hearing, that there's been at least 17 different master plan elements or reexam reports done since 1990, at least that I know of, that have been published on the website. It's like two a year, right? Two every other year, right?
They make it sound like Scarlett never did anything for our town.
She did quite a bit. And they included not only master plan reexams, but land use settlement amendments, which are pretty important. And, you know, I think that it's a disservice to the amount of planning work that's gone into this town, despite not having a comprehensive master plan, to reduce it down to, oh, your master plan's 35 years old. It's not reliable, but this master plan reexam report that says something that supports this, it's very reliable. I would also say that the language, you know, we've gone over a few times, and I appreciate Mr. Kulak's comments, doesn't say, we just need senior housing, owner-occupied, anywhere. It says, the master plan's going to look at potential locations. The potential locations may be none, right? The way that it's phrased is really, we have to explore that in the master plan. Well, we don't know what the outcome of that exploration's going to be. I think it's really important that it notes that the Chimney Rock, it says in Martinsville, project that you've referenced was approved, and that it reduced the concern. That's eight units of senior housing, and that was enough to reduce the concern. So I just want to make sure that that's known relative to this. I think if this site was approved, if 52 units, it would eliminate the concern, right? If eight units was reducing the concern. So that's just an attention to what was brought up about this. I think there's plenty of other planning documents that I think I referenced at the last hearing that show that planning work has been done in Bridgewater. It's not just 1990. And going through any of those, I don't think we had a different outcome about how this site in particular, or how senior units were viewed.
Well, Mr. Coakley, you put on the record that our master plan wouldn't be relevant in a court of law, and, you know, working with Scarlett for all those years, and a lot of members of this board worked with Scarlett, and she was beloved. I know you know Scarlett as well. And to say that that master plan, to say that master plan would have no relevancy, which is a document we rely on until the new one is completed in July, I think we need to hear from our planner to make sure that the master plan document that we're relying on is, in fact, relevant. But you said it wouldn't even hold up in a court of law, that's a quote.
It's a municipality problem. It's not Ms. Doyle's problem.
Well, she was the planner of record.
But she doesn't pass the master plan.
If I can just clarify...
Well, we had Catherine speaking, and I was...
35-year-old master plan would be looked at, was very drawn to side by a court.
Right.
I can tell you that much.
The standard of proof for the negative criteria is not the reexamination report. That's a different section of the municipal land use law. The standard of proof for justifying the negative criteria is the master plan. There have been a number of amendments to that.
17.
But they've been specialized. You want to discourage warehousing. You want to look at a different commercial corridor. None of them has addressed the issues on this property. Again, going back to the beginning, this was, there was an interim regulation, neighborhood see, we're going to keep this single family. That was 35 years ago. A lot has changed. Now, we don't know what the master plan is until you adopt, the planning board adopts it.
Mr. Steck, we had 17 opportunities to put high-density, multifamily units on that property, and 17 times, you went 0 for 17.
It was never, this property was not addressed since 1990.
Did you go 0 for 17? Did you get any mention in any one of the 17 reexaminations since the 1990 master?
None of them addressed this property the way that the...
You went 0 for 17, correct?
Pardon?
You went 0 for 17. 17 reexaminations happened, and 17 times, your property was never zoned for multifamily.
Your reexamination report said you need a new master plan, and it said you ought to consider additional sites for senior housing. That's all it had.
You went 0 for 17 because your property was never...
The 17 is meaningless unless you would address the land use issues with this...
I do object to the continuing line of questioning. It's really not productive. It's just arguing with...
Catherine brought it up. You interjected, and here we are.
All I said was that it's been more than just master plan reexaminations. There have been land use settlements, which are elements of the master plan, which are perfectly valid to talk about master plan goals in regards to land use. Has the R40 zone been looked at again? Has this particular property been looked at in land use settlement to be rezoned? No. Does that mean that we've just missed it, or we haven't gotten to it yet? No. In some cases, we're happy with the zoning, the R40 zoning, so our master plan doesn't make any recommendations to change it. That's probably what happened here. And again, I think it's an oversimplification to say we've only reexamined the master plan. There's plenty of land use settlement adoptions that have been amendments that have looked at different zones. Just because this property wasn't included doesn't mean that we missed the mark.
In the pending master plan, are we making a change of zoning to this area?
Oh.
So you're going to go 0 for 18, Mr. Steck? So why don't we open up if you're... Thank you very much. If we're done, let's open up to members of the public that have questions on Mr. Steck's testimony. Well, he provided new testimony tonight. They're allowed to question him. Come on up. If we can just get your name and address, please.
Ferrara, 788 West Foothill. So when asked about the reason for age restriction and maybe not a lot of children, this, these units will be right next to the JCC, which I happen to love the JCC, and I love there being a lot of children. But you're going, I mean, there's a lot of children at the JCC. So this is going to be right next to a place that not just has children, but has a lot of children. So why do you think that's a good location for it?
Because there are a lot of recreational facilities that are open to everyone at the JCC.
Yeah, but you agree, right, that there, I mean, all year round, but especially in the summer months, it's all out, you know, it's outside, it's a lot of children.
These seniors are not going to be hermetically sealed on this property. But my own judgment, and it may be the judgment of the developer, is that part of the marketing of this property is the proximity to the JCC, you know, swimming pool, exercise class, there are religious functions there. There may be a logical connection of why someone wants a unit here.
I mean, I, so, again, very fond of the JCC, so I could see why anybody would want to go to the JCC. I just don't think then putting senior homes for people who don't want to be around children, that's a good place for it.
Well, they're not going to have a children living below them, or above them, or to the side of them, is the difference.
There'll be a lot of children.
And there's a three-acre lot between us and the campus.
Do we have an opportunity to, I mean, so quite, there's a lot of questions that we ask, and your response is, that's the developer or the applicant, and we should just trust that they know what they're talking about? Do we have an opportunity to ask these questions to them?
I can't answer that. I'm addressing the variance issues that are before this board. And I'm not a market person, but I have, you know, spoken to the professionals involved to get a glean of why they're proposing this type of housing.
But the argument is that we need this housing for age restriction, but we don't have any data to suggest that there isn't enough age restriction, or that we can, they can afford those homes.
The only data that I presented is that when the 1990 master plan was done, 17% of the population was 55 and over. In the latest census estimate, which is a couple of years ago, it was over 30%.
But that's just the number of older people, right? That's not the...
That's 55 and over, and some of them may not be interested in age-restricted housing, but that's a dramatic change from what the situation was when the 1990 master...
They could all have homes already. We don't know that, I'm saying.
All I'm saying is that there's been a significant increase in the sector of the population that is eligible for this type of housing.
Okay. I looked for it, and maybe I missed it, so I'm... Is there, has there been any analysis as far as, and this might not be the right question for you, but analysis as far as noise pollution, or light pollution, or what that's going to do to this area?
This is a bifurcated application, which means that if we get approved at this stage, we have to come back and talk about lighting and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So this is not, we've left certain details out of this, and we're required to come back to the board with a full-blown site plan in the future.
I guess my final question right now is just, why do you think it's a better use of this acreage to put, to cram in 52 three-bedroom units, rather than what it's zoned for? And what, I mean, what's the point of the master plan if that can just, if we just ask for it to change, you know?
Well, the master plan is supposed to support the zoning ordinance, but even the planning board says that you need a new master plan. So the answer is, we don't know what it's going to recommend yet. They're working on it, but it has to go through a public hearing. We don't know what it's going to say. It's speculative to say that the master plan doesn't want to see any more multifamily housing in town, for example, or senior housing. We don't know what it's going to say, because it hasn't, it hasn't been finalized, and it hasn't been subject to a public hearing yet.
Right. But I thought we said that it has been reviewed, and there hasn't been a recommendation to change the zoning in this area.
In my opinion, it is not worthwhile to speculate what something is going to say in the future, because it's not here.
Okay. One last question. You're familiar with this corridor there, that area?
Yes.
Do you, so you're familiar with the other developments that have happened just north and south of that area?
In my report, I kind of did a land use analysis of the whole corridor.
Do you feel that we're getting into the territory of overdevelopment with considering all the other?
I think because of the resources here, a state highway that can handle a lot of traffic, and the fact that this is an isolated parcel that can't be integrated into the abutting single-family homes, it opens the door to a different type of land use that would not be detrimental.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Questions on Mr. Steck's planning testimony?
I do have a question, if there's nobody else. So I'm trying to understand, this is a benefit to Bridgewater residents?
Well, it's, you can't exclude anybody, but the answer is, there, as you know, there's a housing crunch in, actually, New Jersey and the nation. There's a demand for simply more housing, and that's a benefit. This happens to have a, again, some municipalities love age-restricted housing because they turn out to be ratables. You get a lot more tax revenue, you know, than the costs of municipal services, educational services. So a lot of municipalities pressure developers to do this, because it's a ratable.
Okay. But I'm trying to understand, why would a Bridgewater resident, 55 years and older, currently lives in Bridgewater, want to move to this development just because it's 55 and older?
Because they don't want to maintain the property anymore. They don't want to be responsible for cutting the lawn. They enjoy an environment with people that are in the same age bracket that they are, but yet, there are people, again, that, you know, have multiple homes. They may have a home in Florida, they may have a home here. This is for people that could afford both, and it's a segment of the, it's only a segment of the population. But this, for whatever reason, this developer has made an educated judgment that there is a demand for these types of units. And you can't solve all the problems that, you know, with one type of housing unit.
Okay. I mean, I just don't know anybody 55 years and older in Bridgewater that says, I want to go to something like that.
Okay. But there are a lot of these around the state, as you know.
I know nobody. Thank you.
Mr. Steck, before you go, and Catherine, I just want to get you back on the record. Mr. Steck talked about speculation on the next master plan. You're responsible for Bridgewater's adoption of our next master plan, correct?
I am writing it, or, I mean, Scarlett started it.
Yes.
She did a lot of it.
Yep.
I'm writing a little bit of it, and so I'm kind, yeah, I'm kind of the responsible party.
Okay. And in July, you're going to take this to the planning board, and you're going to enter into... Again, I know we have not adopted, the planning board is responsible to adopt it, and eventually the governing body will review it and make their adoption public.
The governing body does not adopt it.
Is there anything currently in the master plan, which sounds like it's been quite substantially worked on, where this zone, this particular property, will have zoning changes that will make high-density housing?
There's no recommendation, no.
Okay. There's nothing in there? So we're not speculating here? You do not see anything in this coming master plan, which is going to come fourth in July, that is going to allow for a change in zoning on that property?
There's no recommendation.
Okay. So you're not speculating on that?
No.
Okay. You're not arbitrary and capriciously talking about the master plan?
I'm giving away the secrets, right? Like, because you're supposed to be unveiling this thing in July, but...
Now, to Mr. Steck's point, that could change. But right now, just so we're not speculating, because I'm a professional speculator. I speculate for a living.
The master plan is the planning board's document, not the planner's document.
We're finally in agreement on something, Mr. Steck.
I'm drafting it on behalf of the planning board and our ad hoc master plan committee, who have all had eyes on it.
Now, the zoning board does have a member that is part of that ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Who is that member?
Mr. Kulak.
Okay. So again, are we speculating, John, that this property is going to question, is going to change?
So, Chairman, I object to these questions.
Fair enough. Noted. Mr. Kulak, is there anything coming forth in this master plan where we're going to be changing the zoning on this property?
Certainly a confidentiality as to what they're doing. I think you ought to think about that.
Take the microphone, please.
Yeah. Could you speak that in the microphone?
I think it was. There's an element of confidentiality when people...
Mr. Kulak, have you signed a confidentiality agreement with Township of Bridgewater?
There are a couple of issues, but they, so I have not. And two, I don't feel comfortable in answering your question directly, since I haven't seen a final copy of the master plan. And I know that it's been, there have been some public input hearings, and there will be some additional circulation of plans to the public, and the council itself will have to approve the plan after the planning board approves it. No? So only the planning board approves it. But I just don't want to say right now.
No, fair enough. Thank you, John. I think it's good that, you know, we're maybe not going to finish up tonight, so the planning board's going to get to see this property. Why don't you go to the planning board, to Catherine, and try and get your change in zoning that you're seeking? I'm curious, Mr. Steck, why you haven't done that?
I don't know why the applicant, all I can say is that we have a right to apply for a variance.
Okay. So you have not gone to our planner or any...
I have not done that. My...
But you could.
...is to look at this as an application to the Board of Adjustment.
But you could, right?
We filed this application a year ago.
But I only do what I'm contracted to do, what I'm assigned to do. I'm not the developer. I'm an agent for the developer on the planning side.
Thank you, Mr. Steck. It's 10:31. We finished up our hearings for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for attending. The next meeting that I have on my schedule...
June 24th.
Mr. Coakley, the board is going to need to respectfully ask you for an extension of time on your application.
I granted the extension to June 30th.
To June 30th. I think we were going to see if we could ask for July 8th.
I'm not granting any more extensions right now.
So the June 24th hearing right now, because we don't have a June 10th because
So the June 24th hearing right now, because we don't have a June 10th because of the primary...
Right.
...elections, June 24th, we have Starbucks and Rockland APV, which is a brand-new application. Starbucks is ongoing.
Okay.
That night is full. July 8th, we just, we have Bridgewater...
He's not going to grant us an extension, so we'll put him at the end of the hearing on, on June 24th. You, you have Starbucks, which is a pretty big case, they've been filed for multiple years, and Rockland APV...
Is a brand-new application.
Is a brand-new application, so it looks like June 24th.
If we get, let me ask you a question. We grant an extension, will you act on this application by whatever that date was, July 8th? Is that the date you gave?
July 8th is, also has Bridgewater Self-Storage, which is a big application. I think, did Germont get carried there, or no? 22nd, correct?
Germont got carried to the 22nd of July.
So the 8th, we, we could technically put them on for July.
Yeah, but, but, Mr. Coakley, I can't guarantee a vote is going to happen. If members of the public object and they want to speak, I'm certainly not going to stop them.
Also, sir, is there, is there expected to be any revision? I heard there was a reduction in the number of units tonight, the professionals would need to...
We're about to present plans for that.
So are we supposed to stay here till midnight?
We didn't get to Mr. Michelle. I asked many times for you to let him get, get on the stand.
Okay, so should we tell members of the public they shouldn't ask questions?
You're the chairman, you run these meetings.
You're the applicant.
You run these meetings.
Yes.
For good or ill, you run them.
Okay.
I will consult with my client if, and ask them if they will further extend to, what is the date, July?
July 8th is the next available.
There will be no extensions beyond that date.
Sure, but, Mr. Coakley, when you have surgery or things happen, we're, we're more than happy to move our schedule around for you, and, you know, we have tremendous...
You had one...